Ready? Monday, October twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, regular session of the Animals of City Council, City Hall, Council Chambers. One point oh, roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
John.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
Two point oh, motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, October ninth, twenty-seventeen, regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Bill. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Three point oh, public hearings, none. Four point oh, presentations. Four point one, Chris Collins, request to overturn pit bull breed prohib- prohibition ordinance. Name and address.
Chris Collins, five oh seven East First Street, Anamosa. Um, I, I have not met any of you guys. I just moved here five months ago. Uh, the reason I picked Anamosa is because there's virtually no crime here. Very safe community, very small, very quiet. Very good police department. Not a whole lot's going on. I did, however, I did not know that there was a breed specific law for pit bulls when I looked here. Uh, this was a little shocking to me because I read the, the ordinance and it basically says, based off of how a dog looks, we're gonna say that you can't have it. Now, in two thousand fourteen, I believe, the city of Olin, who is the same city attorney as the city of Anamosa, has overturned that stating that it's almost impossible to enforce, it's ineffective, and a dog should not be based, judged based off of how they look, which is how any law or ordinance should be based off of. I talked to the Cedar Valley Humane Society, the Monticello Animal Welfare Group, and the Animals of Vet. There's been one dog in the last year turned over to the Monticello Animal Welfare Society. There was a pit bull from the city of Anamosa, and it was a forfeiture based off the dog didn't like small dogs. Not, the police didn't force him out, there was no, they didn't violate anything. They just said, hey, I can't have this dog anymore. So in an entire year, there's been no dogs turned over. I've seen pit bulls around Anamosa. I don't think that they're a problem. We have a very good vicious dog policy where we have to register our dogs, we have to keep them on a leash. If a dog's vicious, it's a problem, and it seems like the police have done a very good job of handling that. There, it's a very costly, I don't know for the, the city specific, but nationwide it costs hundreds of millions of dollars to fund breed specific laws, and they only account for four percent of the cities in the, in the country. Um, and that's based off testing, housing, vet bills, uh, court proceedings, funding the, um, animal control. So, when I asked people around why the law isn't effective, it seems like it's been effective since two thousand eleven, if I, if I, if I'm correct there. And basically, there was a house that housed dozens of pit bulls, and it was a problem. Obviously, that's a problem. But, it's one house with irresponsible dog owners. Dogs can be vicious. The second, most vicious dog is a German Shepherd. Police can't have dogs, one of the most beloved dog breeds in the country. Which is the same, in, in, in America, we go through waves of what, what breed of dog is bad, because we need something to say that, why a dog bites somebody. In the seventies, it was Doberman Pinschers, in the eighties and nineties, it was Rottweilers, and today it's pit bulls. There's not very many facts that say pit bull breed bans are effective. I would probably argue that it makes, um, a nuisance for police officers, attorneys, you guys trying to enforce that law. And in the state of Iowa, it's, we, well, and, and you have the Americans with Disability Act and the Fair and Equal Housing Act. The police department provided me with a response from the ci- uh, city attorney that kind of answered my question and kind of didn't. They, under the ADA and the Fair and Housing Act, all a dog has to do to be an emotional support dog is benefit somebody in any way that eases a psychological, physical disorder that they have. Could be anything from trouble sleeping, to depression, to PTSD. The response I got basically was saying that emotional support dogs don't all have the equal protection under that. However, he didn't really mention anything about the Fair and Equal Housing Act, which says to qualify, you just have to be a miniature horse, or a pi- or a dog. There's, there's no, no laws that say you cannot ban a pit bull from a town if it's an emotional support or a service dog. Emotional support dogs don't have to go through any training. I don't know if any of you guys have any experience with any, um, doctors around here, but it's very lax in the state of Iowa on what dog can be an emotional support dog. Very easy. I don't wanna walk my dog through fairway, I don't own a pit bull right now. But pit bulls can be good dogs. Just the same as a Chihuahua can be a bad dog. So I think the law that is in place, the city ordinance that's in place right now, takes away rights from good, responsible dog owners, or at least makes them jump through a ton of hoops to own a dog when the law's not even really effective as it is. So that's why I would just like your guys' consideration in overturning it, and, um, continuing with the strength, same strong vicious dog ordinance and laws that there are in the city of Anamosa.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Grace.
Did the council have any discussion on, or thoughts on this, and direction that you wanted to?
I would support having that on the next agenda, to overturn that ordinance.
And I think getting feedback from the public would be good too. I mean, yes, I agree, it's worth looking into, absolutely.
Do you want Adrian to prepare the ordinance to remove that?
Let's have Adrian in council chamber, two weeks from tonight.
Rather than prepare something and then us read it and change it, let's discuss it and say what you want it to say.
Cause it's basically, you either leave it or delete it. That's what you'd wanna decide, basically, on the ordinance?
I agree. Maybe Adrian should be.
I would expect additional questions for Adrian. Throw us answers before we can basically cast a final decision.
Along with that, then, any information the police department can prepare on, not maybe even just in Anamosa, but surrounding communities, so we've got a good picture of, of everything.
So have Adrian here next, in two weeks.
You touched on so good points there, thanks.
Alright, so that'll be on the.
Mayor Barnes, I, I have a quick question, if I could, concerning, yes?
You wanna come up and address us?
Bill Goodman, eight oh four East First Street, Anamosa. Is there anybody currently serving on the council right now who knows the history of this ordinance? And what led to the banning of pit bulls in animals? Does anybody know? I, I just suggest that that be thoroughly researched to determine how we arrived at that ordinance in the first place, uh, before you proceed with anything else.
Do you know the history?
No, I don't.
Alright.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Any further comments? Okay, moving on to five point oh, proclamations, none. Community action items. Six point oh, community betterment. Six point one, discussion and possible action on appointment of Megan Thomas to the zoning board of adjustments to fill vacancy.
Currently, we have, it's a five-member board by our code. We currently have with the resignation of Judy Rose at the October eighteenth zoning board of adjustment meeting, and now we're down to three, so we are still legal to operate. We need three to take any action, that's the majority as stated in the state code. And we currently have another ZBA meeting set up for Wednesday of this week to meet that thirty-day requirement on the appeal process that we received.
Well, I move we appoint Megan Thomas to the, um, zoning board of adjustment.
I second that.
First by Cody, second by Betty.
Has anyone else other than Megan shown an interest?
We received another application today from another resident. So potentially, you'll have that on the next agenda for consideration.
Okay.
Good. Then we'll be pulled. We still have one vacancy, and the other one's done, which is a vacation item.
Any further discussion? Which is good, the, to see someone young, to show interest in, uh, a committee or a board of this nature. It'll be interesting. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Six point two, discussion on possible action on appointment of Judy Rose to planning and zoning commission.
Move, approve.
Second.
First by Bill, second by Betty.
Can I ask a question then? Did you just say that she resigned at the board meeting?
Yes.
Last board meeting?
Right.
During the meeting, after the meeting, when did she?
During the meeting, the roll call was taken, and the minutes were approved.
And she resigned.
And then left the meeting hanging.
What's that?
And then left the meeting hanging after that.
Can I pump a comment on this?
Briefly.
Randy Day through a four South Oak Street, Anamosa. I'm a taxpayer, and I may not agree with every decision a committee member makes, but I do expect them to make a decision. And I think what Judy Rose did was totally inappropriate. She wanted to speak out of order, and rightfully so. The chairperson said no, and that's when she quit. It was an important meeting, a decision needed to be made, and I don't think you should approve her for any more boards due to her behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Dale, could I speak, please?
Bill Carlson through a four South Booth Street. I'm the chairman of the zoning board of adjustment. I feel that what happened showed on Judy's part, showed absolute total lack of respect for the business that needed to be taken hand, for the process of what we do, um, for the rule of parliamentary law. I normally wouldn't be up here doing anything like that, but I, I think this is a very serious matter. It basically was done so that all of a sudden, we no longer had a quorum and had to postpone the meeting. In my eyes, it was absolutely ridiculous and very blatant, very blatant. We were, we serve this board for, for absolutely nothing, we get paid nothing for it. We try to, the object is to try to do the best we can to serve the community, and when something like this happens, it, it just, it's, um, very blatant, very, very out of line. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion? It was, it's my understanding, Tammy, and maybe even correctly, Judy was resigning on the day after the meeting, anyway?
That's correct.
I don't know that I think the way it was handled was correct. It definitely could've been done differently, um, but to say that because you handled yourself, I mean, if everybody in this room was accountable at all times for how they handled themselves, I think we could all say we at some time have done something we shouldn't have done, and I'm not sure that justifies not being allowed to serve on a board again. I guess that's my opinion. I'm not in approval of how it was handled or what was done at all, but I also don't believe that's justification for never getting to serve on a board again.
On a board that she already has experience, I mean, this board that she's applying for is.
Maybe she'll do better on the next board.
Is one that she's coming from another community with four years of experience on this board.
Based on her bio, as I'm looking at it here, uh, it's, I would call it a strong resume, her time served in the Springville's planning and zoning, four years, two of those as chairperson. Instrumental in updating their zoning map and their zoning ordinances, which is one of the areas that we have identified as, uh, we wanted to look into ordinances to see if, uh, they still fit the bill for this timeframe.
And I've talked to people who've served for in Springville, and they say that she did a great job.
Nancy.
Nancy Shaver, eight oh three North Division Court. How many vacancies are on that board that she's applied for?
One.
One? Have they had trouble meeting quorum in the past?
No, planning and zoning is, um, just like ZBA, is as needed, um, as issues come up, and their issues have not been, it's not like a variance board, like zoning board of adjustment, so it hasn't been, Betty has not alluded that it's been an issue getting meetings scheduled.
So do they have a meeting on the calendar?
Not currently, no.
I hope you're not desperate then. Thank you.
And we did, um, also receive one today for another appointment, request for appointment to that board, that same board, which didn't make the meeting agenda, so.
Any further discussion?
I don't, I don't know the lady at all, nothing like that, but as Rod said, she has a good resume over there, but is there gonna be something come up that she will be upset again, and, I mean, that's a little bit leery about that, that she did it once. She was gonna resign the next day, fine, but she could've finished the meeting, I mean, that's the thing, I'm a little leery of what could happen.
I was at first, so.
Since it was such an important meeting, to just get up and walk out, I find very wrong.
Well, it's, we're all aware how sensitive that topic is anyway. You know, she, yeah, not trying to read into anything, but it was apparent to me that she was very passionate about it, and when she could not speak, uh, as the chairperson pointed out, uh, again, he, he held to the agenda, the topic at hand. It looked to me, or looked to appear that she was leaning outside of the agenda, so it was reeled back in. But, that is a very sensitive topic for the city, as of today, I think.
Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi judicial board, and the planning and zoning commission is not, is that correct?
Correct. Planning and zoning is a recommendation board to the council. So maybe she.
Different rules. She does have a strong resume, and she'd already planned on resigning if, appointing to this board.
I, um, I don't care if you have the best resume in the world, but if you're disrespectful like that, as I witnessed, cause I was at the meeting, I'm not in favor of appointing anybody who can't be grown up about it and present themselves in a professional manner, especially when they're representing the city of Anamosa.
How long has the position been vacant, the seat been vacant?
I'm not positive. I wanna say at least a year. I have to look back at the record, yeah, at least a year. That's, that's another light side.
Bill.
Bill Goodman, eight oh four East First Street, Anamosa. Uh, I have no comments one way or the other, but I would like to remind everybody in here that resumes are written by the people. They're not written by somebody else. And they may contain, uh, miles and miles of positions held and yada, 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 but what did they actually accomplish?
I agree, that's why I spoke to people in Springville that have served with her.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill, I thought the same thing, thank you.
Well, that comment, uh, gotta believe, all resumes are probably written by the individual, not by a separate entity.
I'm Norman Duchonink, I reside at four fifteen Chamber Drive. I was a engineer, for, I'm retired now, but it's my experience that sometimes people hire other people to write their resumes, and they don't always reflect the truth.
Thanks for that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
No.
That's a three to three, ma'am. You have the option to break that tie.
I don't know.
You're ready?
Cause I'm a day. She did leave us hanging when she should know. Six point three, discussion and possible action on second reading of ordinance, amending zoning regulations to prohibit razor wire, Constantino wire, and similar wire fences.
Move, approve.
Second.
First by Bill, second by Rich. Any discussion?
Does everybody understand why I put this back on the agenda?
Cause we need the second and third. And it's a roll vote.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Possible waiver of the third reading?
So moved.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Rod.
Have there been any comments about this at all since the last meeting?
Not to City Hall, there is not, not written or verbal.
I've had a couple comments, but they weren't for publication. And it's a roll vote.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Six point four, discussion and possible action on second reading of ordinance, amending section one ten of the city code to delete possibility of imprisonment for violation of code of ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
First by Bill, second by Cody. And it, two is a roll vote.
Rich?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And a possible waiver of third reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Bill, second by John, and it two is a roll vote.
There have been any comments about this?
No. Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yeah.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Seven point oh, public safety. Seven point one, motion to approve the re- renewal of beer and liquor licenses. Renewal of class C liquor license outdoor service area with Sunday sale privileges, Anamosa Bowling Center, and renewal of class C liquor license in outdoor service area, Tucker's Tavern.
Move, approve.
First by Rich. Second by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Seven point two, discussion and possible action on setting the terms of sale and accepting bids for old hospital building.
I brought this back to the council, um, after the discussion previously, um, what was advertised for that to solicit bids was a development plan, and then the council chose to, um, not publicize that. So, in following up with Adrian, and addressing a couple of questions that the council had regarding attaching additional strings for bond coverage, um, to cover the cost of demolition for the city and asbestos abatement, um, I did confer with Adrian on that, and Adrian said, you can do that, absolutely, you can do that. He said, just keep in mind, the more strings you attach, the harder it is, the less chance you're gonna have for people to bet on that, and just for information, we've had, uh, one person, I've been, since Al left, with emails, so I have one person that's definitely still interested, a company, and they have expressed the wish that it, um, move forward so they can, cause they'd like to get, if they purchase it, they'd like to get it sealed up before wintertime, and I did tell her that there would be a development plan at that point. Did not go into the other issue that you talked about, um, and there was another person, which I did not speak to, which Al had spoken to, so I was gonna contact that person, and then I received another phone call today from a third party. That's interesting, potentially you have three people that may be interested in doing that.
I guess I'm of the age, just, and I've never put a government real estate deal together, but I've put a lot of commercial real estate deals together, and once you just put the bid out there, you always have the counter, like, once somebody comes and they come with an offer, if, whatever, I mean, it's almost like you wanna know what they're bringing to the table and willing to give to obtain what you're willing to sell. At that point, when you get to review the offer, I think is the time to respond with a, thank you for your offer, we accept, however, terms and conditions could be blah, 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 in the form of a counter. By the time you get to that point, they have already done the math and done the projection and have pondered while they've been waiting to hear back from the city of all that they're gonna do, and they kinda have their heart set in it, where if you have the conditions up front, I think you limit the offer you're going to get. So I'm for. So I'm for just getting it out there and letting the bids come in and we can do a counter, that's my opinion. It seems that you get farther that way.
As a city, you can, as Adrian stated in the previous one, you can, you have the right to accept or reject all bids, so.
And you can counter them, you don't have to accept or reject, you can counter, we'll accept contingent on.
Well, what's wrong with being upfront with everybody, so, before they even get to that point? Now these real estate deals you were involved in.
You might not even need that.
Did you set a price to begin with?
Sometimes, not always on commercial you didn't, not when you were dealing with.
And one of these interested parties is a company representative?
One is a company representative, not from Anamosa, but nearby.
I had a gentleman approach me and I had no idea, you know, who's with you Tammy, but there was somebody who wondered what was going on. And I said, just let them know whenever we move forward or they would see, you know, if they was interested in the situation.
The one company did make a good point that I spoke to by email regarding getting it sealed up.
Yes, that's true.
Before there's any more damage done, that was their major concern.
Well, I mean, since we have possession of it and there's, liens are all cleared, they should be able to get possession very quickly from us, essentially.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the exact timeline is, but it's a lot faster than starting back, back at the beginning, like the other property to acquire.
Yeah, yeah, that part's all done, so they can have possession fairly quickly. I mean, I.
Just a public hearing notice is all I have to.
Yeah, I think.
But I would be, yeah, but I would still be in favor of letting them know what expectations are than going through a give and take, and then maybe at the end after give and take, they say, we're done and walking away, and then we're back to square one.
Do you have a defined what you're wanting it to say, like a definitive?
I think it should have a tax base of.
You guys talked about that last December.
Yeah, and I have not, from day one, been on board with that. I, that, Cody, you're the one that brought it up, and you have a definitive, like you want.
I think it should have a, uh, a tax base, it should have, they should be able to tell us what the tax base will be off the property in the end. Yes, so that we know what our return is going to be, and I'm okay with selling it for a dollar, whatever it may be, if, if they have a good plan with it.
But I think you guys also talked about things being done within a certain timeframe and having performance bonds. You guys talked about some of those things that need to be, I think, put upfront, instead of, here's the property for sale, and then, oh, by the way, you need to do this, let's just be upfront with them and.
And I'm on the fence about the performance bond, I mean, I need to see what it's going to say up front in writing, like, I'm not going to agree, like, I want, this is what the performance bond is going to be, and we yet have anything like that.
I'm absolutely opposed to going out there and saying, you need a performance bond of seventy thousand dollars to remove asbestos, if this deal falls through and the performance bond, a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
No, you're not going to get anyone to come.
No.
So that, if, if we get the property back, then we should put that on the taxpayers.
It's on us now anyway, if we don't sell the property.
I'm just saying, I'm trying to protect our pocketbook down the road, so we don't have to be the ones burdened with it.
I don't see protecting the pocketbook by making it unsalable.
I don't want it back again.
I don't have a problem with having a plan for how they're going to make it, development plan. Don't have a problem with setting a minimum tax base, we've done that before, we did that with R.R.I.M.'s properties. I do have a problem with making them go out there and spend the money for those kinds of performance bonds. Let them put the money into the building. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, it costs over a million dollars, is that what I heard, Doug, to get this building ready for community care to move into?
Yeah, uh, your guess.
Yeah, so now in order to repurpose it, they're going to stick a bunch of money back into it, because all of those rooms that were patient rooms are now just rooms with no plumbing anymore, because of the population that was in there, and they went to community residence. So whoever does it, whatever their plan is, they're going to have to put money back into it.
This bond, they, they'll get their money back when the project's finished. It's just there to keep them moving forward, so, their incentive.
So, as we talk here this evening about development plan, how, the devil is in the details, so how detailed do we plan to make this? Uh, as, as we begin to list those items, do we, as Bill says, make it, you know, unattractive that nobody wants to venture in? I get, you know, put something up, out there upfront, and, and leave maybe more of the details to the, to the backside after we've got strong confirmation that someone's coming in. Just things that I had jotted down. You know, the project type, is it going to be refurbishment, new build, uh, conversion, uh, property type, finance, proj- project length? Uh, plans of the completed project, is that something we're going to be expecting upfront?
And there are companies that will never.
Well, that, that's just it, I, I'm not sure how detailed we.
Well, let me ask you this, because you're, you're talking about getting them in here and then negotiating. At what point, you know, granted, I don't think they've got to come in with, you know, full fledged, here's everything, boom, that's it, set in stone. But once you sell the property, what's your, what's your take? Where, where are you going to go to say, what are you doing with this property, or are they just going to let it sit there for five years? You know, once you sell it, your hands are off of it. So what, what are you going to try to negotiate before the actual sale? That's my question for you.
Well, you don't know how you get the offer, you might get an offer from somebody that's good enough, you don't have to have all that stuff attached to it, and it can be minimal, is what I'm saying. You don't know what's going to come. And to put a lot of restrictions on the front end, I feel you could lose some people, it could be like, wow, I mean, what's going on there that they've got all this on it?
Well, but, on the, on the flip side of that, though, you could have that individual who said, well, I made an offer based on what you told me, now you're telling me I need this, and you, I need this, and I need to do this, and they may just say, I'm done, I'm walking away.
Can I make a suggestion, can you, if you're talking about a development plan, you want to know, but is it going to be used for housing, apartments, senior living, a business, so maybe ask them for what their plan for the use of that building is, ask them for the timeline of when they expect it to be done, those two simple things in the development plan.
Most offers come in that say.
Because that would be simple.
We'd like to purchase block for purpose of.
And, 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 and you could look at that and say, you have somebody that wants to put apartments in there, and they're going to have it up and running, and at this value, in a year and a half.
That's, that's what I was going to say.
So you just keep it simple in those two things, the use of the building, the plan, and then the timeline that they expect to have it done, and a minimum assessed value.
That I think, that, that I would go with, but just to say, here's the property, and then try to negotiate all that, I find it, I find very wrong.
Right, and I'm good with that, but what I find is that it's, that would be no different than how we normally should have our building things that, once you get your building permit, you have an ear, a year to finish, I mean, but then you better.
Yeah, if you have somebody that's going to do something great, have this assessed value, and you, and it's a viable, it'll be something that'll move, and that they'll be able to use it and sell it, or rent it out, or whatever. That, you guys can make that judgment call when you get those plans in.
Those are the types of restrictions that we need to put in place before we put it up.
And you can put that in your bid notice, those requirements, timeline, development, use plan, and minimum assessed value.
Yes, I, I agree.
All right, so we need.
So do you want me, do you want me to do that kind of?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Perfect. Do you want to make a motion?
I will make the motion to authorize the city attorney to prepare the bid forms or the sale forms with the three components that Tammy mentioned.
Which are?
The assessed value, development use plan.
Timeline.
And timeline of completion.
And I will second that.
First by Bill, second by Rich. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven point three, discussion and possible action authorizing the city attorney to proceed with acquiring title to the property located at one oh one and a half East Main Street under section six fifty seven A point ten A of the Code of Iowa.
Move to approve.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by John. Discussion?
I talked to the property owner of the lower floor and she is really encouraging us to get this done.
So her roof quits.
Six months or a year ago.
So this interested party, how interested are they?
She signed the letter, you read your packet.
I, I see that there's a letter there, but.
She is extremely interested.
Yeah, she bought us.
It's like a resume.
Worth as what the paper is there.
It's like a resume, you just don't know.
Thankfully, she's already a Main Street business owner, property owner, so she knows what she's getting into.
She did a lot of research.
This is a pretty sure thing, I've talked to her.
I have too, yes.
All right, so we're ready to vote?
No, we're not ready to vote.
Okay.
Please, I'm not.
All right.
Go ahead, if you're. Uh, Mike Dearborn, four oh five North Division. My question is, why are we going this route? Why, why's the city got to obtain this property to help her buy the property? I mean, it's, it's no different than any of these other purchases us investors do. I, as investor, don't come to the city and ask you to buy it first and then sell it back to me. Maybe not buying it, but you're, you're taking possession of it. What's the reason for that, as opposed to having that investor go through the normal channels?
If memory serves me correctly, you were on the council when we talked about condemning this property.
Yep.
And nothing happened then, and it's been sitting empty, leaking water into the lower floor, and.
I'm fully aware of that.
And now the building next to it, um, I found out today, so.
Am I right, it's abandoned and you can't get a hold of the owner, he keeps, like, was it a corporation or an LLC and he keeps changing and has all these names and.
It was in a trust as well, it was.
And then, and I like, lots and lots of trusts and you can't find.
Those back taxes owed on the property plus are leaned against it for the.
Okay, so I'm still asking you then, why, did this person come to the city for this kind of help, or did you go to them? And, and why are we following through it, why didn't you just advise to say, go through the normal channels and buy this property?
For her, it's cross prohibitive for her to go through the regular channels, because it made so much work, and that's what she was trying to lay out and plan, and that's why she did her research, to have to pay all those back taxes.
And the city felt.
And, and, and to refurbish that building, and to pay the seven thousand dollars for the tuck pointing.
The city could forgive that.
It was cross prohibitive for her and her research to, to do all of that, but if the city could take possession, the taxes would be waived, like the old hospital, and then it would be cost effective, then she could justify putting her money into that, and she was willing to.
I understand that part of it, you mentioned the old hospital, but you all just got done discussing that, and look, look where that ended up. You know, that ended up back in the city's hands.
I guess we have two choices, do this and have someone take it over and picks it up, or have it to where it can't be afforded to have anything done and it sits even longer. And then their court affects all our property though.
My question is, all to you, was this something you proposed to her, or she came to you, or?
She came to Al, Johnson.
Okay.
She wasn't approached, she came to Al.
Okay.
On her own, I don't know how she heard about it, or who she was talking to.
She came to Al after we discussed it, what we were going to do with it, and it was in the paper or something. And she read it and then came to the city to ask what the plan was going to be.
Okay, well, that was just my question, thanks for the answer.
Thanks, Mike.
So what do we consider the letter that she signed? Because I, my reluctance, unless we get some type of purchase agreement, that she will take this property over, we've been involved on another parcel, that we were led to believe how it was going to play out, and then it changed. Uh, just trying to prevent anything like that occurring again.
Do you want me to ask Adrian how bonding, how, how this connects her and how secure we are that she can't back out, is that your question?
Can we put.
That's my concern.
Can we put it on the agenda, can we table it till next meeting, because my question for Adrian is going to be, can we accept a purchase agreement on property we don't own yet?
Does.
You know what I mean? Kim, I don't know if we can, you understand my thing, Rod, except for her offer, when we don't have, it's not our property to accept her offer, and I'm not sure if we have to.
If you read this, we're not selling it, all we're doing is authorizing the city attorney to acquire the property.
Right, but once we acquire, you have to.
A separate line item at another meeting.
Well, I understand that, Bill, but listen, for us to acquire it, to give to her, somewhere along the line, you have to have a deed, okay? To own property, you have to be deeded that property.
And that's what we're trying to get Adrian to do for us.
Thank you, but the question back to this was, Bill doesn't feel comfortable going without more of a commitment from her. We need Adrian to be here, so we can say, can we get something from her before we own it? We get it now.
We have to own it, that's Rod.
That's Rod.
Want to point that out?
My choice, my choice of words is on the purchase agreement, probably not.
I get it, Bill.
But I, I want, I want to know that there's a stronger commitment than what I'm seeing in this packet.
Then her, just her signature on that line is what you're saying.
The first time, shame on us.
So do, someone want to make a motion to table it till the next meeting, if they can be here, and then ask them those questions?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
First by Rod, second by Betty to table this till two weeks from today.
Another reason to have Adrian at the next council meeting.
That was Rod and Doug the first two sides?
No.
Rod and Betty?
Rod and Betty, sorry, Bill.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carrie. Seven point four, discussion and possible action on request from Mike and Carrie Klett to obtain an easement from the city of Anamosa to install a concrete pad in the city right away of area located on the north side of their property along West Liberty Street.
This is back on the agenda, just for clarification and final understanding with Carrie. The council did not want to sell this right away, not feeling it was good practice, um, for city use, and Carrie asked me, she would be willing to do an easement, and as Adrian indicated, there's a couple of ways you can handle an easement, you can sell it to them.
We have, we have it already. You can pass it on, we already have it on the computer.
I have the, 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 I want to make sure all the papers presented to you.
Thank you.
You can sell her naked, or you can create an easement that has the terms that, um, and I talked to Pat Callahan about this, which might be a good way to go, is to say, you're allowed to put that concrete pad in there on there, the easement, with the understanding that if the pad has to be removed for any city work, that will be at the Klett's cost, and if they want to put it back in in the same dimensions, it would be at their cost. So it would cover the city in case we did have to remove it and it wouldn't be any cost. cost to the city, and then we wouldn't have to try and determine a price for what that easement could be. So no matter how many times we were in there to do work, had to come out, Carrie knows it would be her cost. And she gave us diagrams to show what her lot looks like.
This goes back, um, to April. Um, we tried to do this by getting the proper building permit, calling eight one one. Um, I think you guys remembered the letter I sent you all, a lot of it got emailed to you, those that didn't have emails, I sent it to you. Um, some of you might've read it, some of you didn't. Um, the bottom line is, we tried to do it the right way and had really no idea we were on city property. Nobody sits around and reads beacon maps. You do what your neighbors say, this is yours and this is ours, you know, it's okay, but you've been mowing it, so I'll just keep mowing this, you know? I stand before you tonight to ask that you grant my family to acquire an easement, in order to place a floating slab, so that it may be used to shoot a basketball in a hoop. Our current driveway on the west side is not an option, because of the steep pitch and the incline to the garage. The gas line runs on the east side of the property, and Black Hill said that digging anything there is not even an option. Um, we currently mow, weed whip, fertilize, and aerate this whole front yard, which is approximately seven thousand square feet of city property. I pay Minger to do this, and I'm not complaining about the cost associated with maintaining the city property, um, even though I just found this out back in July. And like I said, nobody really sits around and reads beacon maps. Um, I now have made myself familiar with this, for your information. By granting this easement, the city is out absolutely nothing, the city has nothing to lose. I'm simply asking for reasonable access to further the use of the adjoining property for good reasons. The proposed site is at least ten feet away from the water main, and if the city needed to dig in that area, it would be completely out of the way. However, like you, I myself have been trained to expect the unexpected. Let's say that in the future, they would like to run a new water main through that proposed area, or let's say that they would like to widen the street. Although we can say this is very unlikely, we still need to respect that the city reserves this right. And I understand that if it came to this, then we would have to dig up what they wanted immediately and get out of their way. I have the resources and the equipment on hand to do this immediately. In addition to this, I understand that I am going to need to pay for all of this, and I'm also willing to sign and pay for the cost and filing fees associated, associated with the easement that involves the city attorney. Once again, I stress, the city of Anamosa is out nothing. Um, I have eight one dig tickets that indicate that the proposed area is free of any utilities. The first eight one one dig tick indicated that MediaCom, CenturyLink, and Alliant was in the way, so we had to move it down five feet. They again came and said everything was fine. Um, I think, um, in the original meetings, and I'm sorry, this has been on the agenda before, this is the first time I ever got a chance to come here, I didn't know I was allowed to do that, I'm not really into city government, okay? Or maybe I would've came before. It's, uh... Where it was proposed the first time, was way too close to the city water main, and I understand that. We moved it back. Um, the original excavation site is still there, because we didn't wanna move anything, because the lines are already there, and when we move it back, we're gonna move the line back with it. Um, so it's clearly at least ten feet away. I also wanted to indicate to you that if you look on the map very closely and study that lot, you'll see that on the south side of the lot, there is, um, there's probably room to put this basketball court, and this, and this hoop, or floating slab, or whatever you wanna call it. In order to do that, I would have to, uh, take away two mature trees, and a whole row of giant shrubs that act as a noise barrier. Uh, because of that, I have four neighbors who are all affiliated with what you see on that map right there. Um, basically, it says you're mayor and city council members. I have a Brian Spargro signature, Jamie Raymond signature, Matt Gansky signature, and Theresa Young signature. They are all property owners that would be greatly affected by me pouring that down there, where that big white thing is. Apparently, this map is pretty old, guys, I don't have no RV down there, okay? But like I said, there's mature trees and a privacy fence. Basically, the note says, and you can keep this copy, it says, "Please allow the Klett's at three oh three Gibbs Street, the easement on the north side of their house for their concrete slab for the basketball hoop. If the Klett's were forced to place this on the south side of their house, it would interfere with two mature trees that would need cut down, and a whole row of privacy bushes that would also need removed. This vegetation not only serves as a privacy barrier, but also as a sound barrier, and we are afraid this would allow unnecessary noise to filter through if this slab and hoop had to be placed here." I was wondering who wanted this, okay? So, I've looked at my options, and tried other areas of the property, and, uh, and I would just ask that, um, before you make your final decision, um, this has been going on since April, and I'm not trying to burden you, and I seen your agenda tonight, so I'm gonna speed it up, okay? If the easement was denied, I would ask the city, is the city really justified in denying reasonable access to this lot, when I already maintain all seven thousand square feet of it, at least? I didn't really measure it from ruler to ruler, but I'm just simply asking to use it, and pay for all associated costs with it, until the city needs it back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no problem with her having an easement. I don't have any reason to have a problem with that.
With the stipulation she's put on, about if it has to be removed and it's at their cost, I, I got no problem with that.
The only thing I'd like it in writing.
Right, if, if you did choose to do an easement, we'd have to, preparation come back before, for council approval, before it's filed with the, or the court's office, so it wouldn't happen to me, obviously, sorry.
I move we...
Green, what, Green, what, uh, what viewpoints do you have on this, Green?
You know, I know Rich barged up, uh, the one guy I bought, the sixty foot easement, and we don't really need that much. But you know, almost all our streets in this town are at least sixty feet, for, for utilities and everything else to run through. I know we have an easy water line out there, I should put it in gym, I think we made five water main repairs out in that area. They talked about maybe putting it on the east side, which is not a possibility, with high lines going through there. Um, you know, I don't have a crystal ball that, that's gonna predict the future of what's gonna go on out there or anything else, but, uh, you know, it's still the homeowners' business order responsibility, know where the property pins are, this is a, for them, oops, I did it, and now I want forgiveness for it, you know?
Well, you, you talk about, we've got everything at sixty-six feet for streets?
I said not every street, I said most of the rest of the streets.
But, the street that runs in front of her house starts off at sixty-six feet, and then narrows down, down the block. So I mean, it's right there, that it's not sixty-six feet.
You, you're going to the south?
I'm going to the south, if you go down Gibbs Street to the south, you can see how that line juts in where those cars are, so that street narrows at that point. I would think if they're willing to do with the easement what was stated, if there is a problem, they would tear it out, and see why it couldn't accom, trying to accommodate the people in this town.
I would also ask that before we pour the concrete, somebody from the city would come out and make sure it's okay, because I've been kinda told two different things on where the water main is, I haven't really been told by an official, or seen a map.
I'll come out, and I'll take a word.
That'd be great, thank you very much, cause one city worker told me when they marked for eight one one, "Oh, the city main runs right through the middle of the street, just stay away ten feet from the street and you'll be fine." And then the next time they came, um, they said it was, uh, right underneath Oldham's mailbox. I'm just getting really mixed up here.
That was the mailbox on the north.
It runs through your mailbox, then it goes over to Oldham's, and then goes up, towards the west side, so I'll show you exactly where it's at.
Okay, that, that'd be great, because if it was approved, the easement, I wouldn't wanna obviously pour the concrete until I was really ten feet away, like we said, you know?
Fine, that'll work, I'll come meet with you.
Okay, thank you.
One of the concerns I have is, it's city property. Any accident or injury occurred, the city would be liable, even though after the fact we've given them the permission to, for this, uh...
How does that work? If somebody got hurt there, they're technically on city property, correct?
It's just, it'd be just like a park or a street or anything else.
Just be like any other right of way.
The city's not held responsible for it.
That's my understanding on, on this, when it, the last time was on the agenda, is the city is responsible. Uh, and that was a question I presented to, uh, legal counsel. I guess I would like to make sure it's perfectly clear that we are not, we're sitting in here trying to assume what the legal is, and we don't have the background in that. Although, legal counsel at that time said that we would be liable, I just wanna make sure I heard that correctly.
What type, I, I... What type of injury are we talking about, somebody hurt by a basketball court?
It could be anything, Tammy, somebody could, somebody could trip over this and be injured. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to say what will occur, you make sure that you're not liable for any occurrence.
Relating to that concrete pad?
Relating to this, yeah, this subject easement.
Would it be possible for Adrian to draw something up in the easement? Does it ha, have to be filed with, uh...
Has to be filed with the court's office.
Can I ask you, um, what kind of basketball hoops are you planning on putting on?
Uh, one basketball hoop, we've already paid for it, it was twenty-four hundred dollars.
Okay, is it one that's, is it gonna be one that's gonna be cemented in the ground? Is it one that floats?
No, it has to be cemented in the ground, and it would be cemented in my property.
Okay.
But it has to stick out seven feet. That's one of them. So it would be cemented way, way up here, by this property?
Okay.
By my house, correct? Yes. And the reason the court is the way it is, is because it's within the limits of what I felt was reasonable, and it's also close to a half court, for a three-point line.
So if I get clarification from Adrian, which he'll be here at the meeting, do you want him to go ahead and prepare an easement for possible consideration, and have him, if it's, if the city has no liability?
Do you need a motion then, for that?
As long as it indemnifies us.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Motion's out.
To grant them an easement.
Why don't we, I'm sorry, why don't we just wait till we have the information, and make the motion at that time?
One of the reasons we're doing it this way is that he can come with the easement already prepared, as long as it's legal to do the indemnification, and we can go ahead and...
Shouldn't he do that anyway? Come with the information that we're asking for?
But if he doesn't have the easement prepared, you can't act on it, that's all I'm saying.
Put it back two more weeks, so instead of being two weeks behind, it puts it four weeks.
Actually, it'd be three weeks.
Two meetings. Cause we talk about it next meeting, and then the easement wouldn't be available to approve until the following meeting. If he comes with it, drawn up next meeting, with the indemnification already in it, then we can go ahead and approve it, if it meets our approval.
I just, I don't, I don't like that course of action, but...
So we got first by Cody, second by Rich.
And, and that's what it's gonna be, is to come back to us, with an easement with the indemnification as part of it.
So we're not saying we're approving the easement?
No, we're just saying we want Adrian to...
So if it doesn't meet our approval, then we don't approve it, and he goes back and...
If it does, then she can move forward in, in a reasonable time before, you get her courting.
Before it freezes.
Can Adrian put some clause in there that leaves the city, uh...
An indemnification clause?
Yeah, that leaves it not liable.
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to do, yeah.
I understand, that's what you're, okay. That was kind of a big word, sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Carried. Seven point five, discussion on possible action on resolution. Adopting title.
Six.
Six, non-discriminating agreement and appointing a Title VI coordinator.
Vote to approve.
First by Bill?
Second.
Second by Betty?
Required to take our money, us money.
It's not gonna affect the current STP project, but the future ones, they randomly pick cities and make them do this. And if it won't approve it, okay, I don't have to be the coordinator, that's okay.
Any further discussion?
Who is gonna be appointed coordinator?
The lady said it's usually the city clerk.
That's what I thought I read in there, too.
That's what she told me, that's why I put the name...
Excuse me for wanting clarification to your motion. You know what happens when you assume, and you're not gonna make it out of the meeting?
Alright.
Good question.
So, any further discussion? And that's a roll vote.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Seven point six, discussion on possible action on possible erosion control measures for new construction and development.
This is on the agenda, I don't expect you guys if you wanna act on it or just discuss it tonight, but I wanted to give you a copy of Marion's, which I gave you on a separate attachment, I did do some research. It's large, in charge, there's, um, I checked with, uh, the city of Mount Vernon, the city of DeWitt, semi-comparable population and in, close to our area, they do not have an erosion control requirement at the development permit, at the individual building permit level. Their erosion control comes with their subdivision and plating requirements, as do ours. And to use an example of Chamber and Council Street, those are two separate plating subdivisions. Chamber was Meadow Ridge seventh, Council Street's in Meadow Ridge eighth. Those were approved by, um, and reviewed, those subdivision plaits, preliminary and final, by our engineer at the time, so the erosion control and swales were put in and such that were mentioned in those. So, just to let you know what other cities are doing, Mount, Monticello I did check with, theirs is a little unclear in their ordinance, and Doug hasn't returned my call, he must've been busy, and then, um, their public works, um, gentleman, council left a message with him, I can't tell if theirs is relating directly to subdivisions or individual development permits, um, but in discussion with, uh, DeWitt and Mount Vernon, um, their take on it is, is that you need to address it in the subdivision first, and then if you wanna put something individually in development permits, as Adrian attempted to do, with some leeway with, for the zoning administrator, they said that, you know, that's a possibility, where you could add it to your development permit, you could require every development permit that has bare ground, and doesn't have any barriers, whether it be your established vegetation of so many feet, or erosion control, if you don't like that flexibility of the zoning administrator to put something in there, for everybody to have some erosion control, whether it's, um, established vegetation in a certain amount of footage, or erosion fence, so, so I didn't know if you wanted to really get into that discussion, or if you wanted to do more research, or review that.
And part of the problem here is that, um, what I've seen out there hasn't been so much erosion, as it is that's groundwater, just like a watershed, it starts at the top and it goes all the way down, like our sixteen hundred acres that feeds into Stallion Creek, it starts at the top, and it worked its way down to Stallion Creek, it's the way God designed the earth we live on, and so there's not so much erosion out there as there is groundwater that's collecting, and in, uh, one case, I believe, four-inch tile coming off of, uh, drain spouts, that exacerbates the problem, or makes it worse, because it has that, all that... That exacerbates the problem or makes it worse because it has that, all that water going in a specific line.
So you're saying gutters are being...
Well, all, all of that, before, before the houses were built, that water was dispersed over all that ground. Now with the houses built, collecting on the roof, going down to the gutters, down the downspouts, funneling in certain areas. And it's, it's accelerating that runoff then because all that water is collecting off the roofs and down.
And part of the problem is we're talking about two different things in erosion control and groundwater.
The erosion control doesn't address their issues at all.
Their problems at all, no.
That you're here with.
But there was silt fence out there and that's already filled in level full.
Well, they knocked it over when they mowed.
Mowed, yeah.
When they were mowing because they knocked it over and that silt fence is gone.
Yeah. But it's two separate problems, like you said.
I'm, uh, Norman Duchonny. I live on, uh, four fifteen, uh, Chamber Drive. And what you addressed here has nothing to do with our issue, we're not concerned about erosion. Uh, she mentioned the grading should, was approved. It should not have been. It was incorrect. That's our problem. And, uh, so now we're trying to have a putback on the builders to have some way for the water to go out. Let me exp- explain briefly. The natural slope, and it's not a steep hill, but it, it goes towards the street. And you expect we shouldn't have a problem because we got this natural slope sto- towards the street. But the problem was the way that was graded. Whereas, uh, after I moved in, I found out I had a major problem. We had a thirty-foot white lake in the back for at least three days every time we got a good rain. Between back of my yard and the back of my decks, nor neighbors. And so right after a rain, I walked the street, the street end, behind the houses. And the houses are graded, so they have a slope, uh, downhill behind the houses, which is opposite the hill. And then, uh, all the water for five houses goes along, parallel to the street. And all that water ends up coming, um, between two different houses. One is mine and one is next door. And that's our problem. And so when they build new houses in those lots, it's gonna tend to make it worse. And so we need some kinda alleviation. And, uh, and, uh, my neighbor, the ni- Lyons, which I can see every time it rains. Every time we get a good rain, they got standing water for three days in the backyard. And the reason it stays there is because there's not much slope and it's going parallel to the street. And it takes, it slowly trickles down into their yard because it was never graded right in the first place. And so we wanna make sure that when they build, they don't make the problem worse than what it is. So we only need this to imply to that one block, not the whole city, just that one block. Where, where it was done incorrectly by the city, they passed something that should never have been passed. It was not graded properly.
I'm Linda Lyons, four twenty-three Chamber Drive. And I have a letter here from Michael Elmore. And it says, he couldn't be here tonight, but I'm gonna read what he's said and I'm gonna give each of you a copy. My name is Michael Elmore. I reside at four nineteen Chamber Drive in Anamosa. I am sorry I cannot attend tonight's meeting due to scheduling conflicts. However, I am very concerned about the water problem affecting my property and that of my neighbors. In two thousand and twelve, basement was flooded. And we had to grade our backyard at our own expense because of inadequate drainage to the city sewer. This problem has never been addressed by the city. And now that new construc- construction is taking place, my home will once again be adversely affected by inadequate drainage of water from properties adjacent to my own. I fully support the proposed ordinance. It is the right thing to do. And I have had an ordinance prepared tonight and I will pass that around as well. Here's, uh, Mr. Elmore's letter. And those of you that have been over and viewed the situation, you can see that his home was completely washed out underneath. The ordinance has been prepared tonight for your consideration, possibly discussion and maybe even, uh, a motion to have it put in place. The ordinance says, I'll pass it out first.
Where'd this come from?
This has been prepared.
Who prepared it?
Is that important?
Well, I...
You have found it to Adrian. Can you, Adrian has seen it.
That's fine, but can I, you don't wanna say who prepared it?
No, I don't at this time unless you need to ask me. Adrian has seen it. He was on vacation. He, he, um, his office received it, but Adrian has not seen it as yet. Pardon? Adrian has not seen it as yet. He is on vacation. Oh, I gave it to him before he went and his secretary said he has read it.
Okay.
That's what I was told.
Well, and that's why I'm asking is because he represents the city?
No, it wasn't prepared by Adrian, by someone else.
Okay, and so any ordinance we ever would approve, we would need him to write it?
Yeah, and I have, I made sure he had a copy. I'll read the ordinance. Ordinance would require all contract and building permits to be required to submit in writing detailed plans for drainage into the city, Anamosa City Storm Sewer System, and to not allow for tile lines or other drainage systems to drain into adjacent owner's property, thus creating a water hazard to its neighbors or to other property owners. Also, this ordinance requires builders to work with the Anamosa City Sewer System to erect and to construct a proper drainage system for all residents involved in the construction project for subdivisions, residents and other building construction projects involving permits. And ours deals with, we have tile lines that come down. And this morning, they have, uh, I don't know who the constructor person is, but he started digging another house. Once again, we will have another tile line. There are tile lines, anybody who has gone, and I think we've had several of you that have viewed the situation. There's tile lines coming right down the hill. We need to do something about it or we're gonna have a major problem. So I'm asking if council would please take in consideration and check into it. Maybe even vote tonight because if the construction continues, I was told that, being that there is still construction to be done on the top of that hill, they can now get down in there easy with heavy machinery and work with the contractors. And if we put three or four storm sewers in for the drainage of the water, it would cost a minimal right now to do this. But if we wait until the houses are built, we won't be able to get in there and there's gonna be some real problems.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say that there's three of us that are involved, are receiving all this water from the whole neighborhoods going through our yards. And, and the third one is, uh, Michael Elmore, who couldn't be here. So we're the ones that are getting the blood of, of all the mistakes the city made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, can we have Greg answer some questions?
Bill Goodman, eight oh four East First Street. I've, I've been listening to these folks who are coming to you with a serious problem that needs to be addressed. And as I look around the room, there are people shaking their heads, giggling, rolling their eyes. And this is just exactly what pisses me off about this city council. And if somebody comes to the city council meeting and addresses a problem, I am expecting the city council to be attentive and to address the problem. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Greg, would you explain the storm sewer system and what's going on?
Well, yeah, I've been out there several times and walked through the properties and neighborhood. This was first brought up as a soil erosion control problem. And it's turned out that there, there's no soil erosion control problem out there. Generally between the back of the houses on Council Street and the backyards of the people that live on Chamber Street, there's somewhere between fifty to seventy-five feet of grass between the, uh, the properties. Uh, also on the, uh, Chamber Street side, there's a swale that's approximately a foot deep that runs all the way up through there. This area has always been a lot of groundwater in that area. I talked to Al Beerbrot, who lives on Chamber Drive, and he'll tell you that ever since he moved there, every time we have a large storm, that's before they even build all these new houses, he had water standing in his backyard. I don't see that right now at this point there's any problem. I see everything that runs down that swale and out to the street. Now, there is a house that is out there, I believe it's seven nineteen, uh, or four nineteen, whatever it is, Council Street. We've actually been called out there before, uh, Jim has, because they thought there's a water main break. And right between the two houses, there's a swale for the water to come out to the street. And you can actually see the water boiling out of the ground. It's a groundwater problem is what it is. But all the storm sewers, everything that's in place out there right now work effectively as far as the streets and everything else. I think what is happening here is they're looking for somebody to see to come in after everything's been built and stuff and put in some kind of a storm drain system down behind the houses and stuff like that. Well, now, now at this time, that's private property. That's nothing that we can be going on to private property and doing. That's my opinion.
So the problem, no matter, like, so, so obviously there's a problem. And we, if I lived there, there'd be a problem. If you lived there, there'd be a problem. But what you're saying, it's not the city. There's nothing wrong with the storm sewer. There's nothing wrong. It is the actual...
Part of the problem here, like up on Caitlin, was that that was all farm ground. It was all tiled. And the water went down the tile, went down into pond tree. Everything was good. We go in and start digging basements and we start cutting tile lines. Yeah, I did speak to one, um, contractor who's been working out there. He's built several houses out there actually and he's actually building one of them up there himself. And he said during their building, they have found several, uh, tiles, just like Bill said, that they've, uh... And once you take them tiles and it's bringing everything from them fields on up, further up the hill, which is over by Caitlin and everywhere else, when you cut them tile lines and you plug it off, then all that water starts backing up and you can start getting the pressure underground, hydraulic pressure. Eventually, it's gonna come up and out somewhere.
So this erosion control thing, if we were to pass this, it would not...
Well, it started, it started out as a big citywide deal. We should, we should implement something for the whole city. And, and we just heard him say, no, we just want something implemented for that block. There is no erosion control problem out there. It's a groundwater problem. We can't control the groundwater.
So we need to set the erosion control thing aside because that's not, that's not an issue at all, right?
That's not an issue at all.
That was kinda what I was asking. Frank, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Linda Lyons, four twenty-three Chamber Drive. Um, the idea is we're not asking, and by the way, the first letter that I submitted, I think in August, had everybody on the block's name. Everybody is in agreement with having something done for the water control. To put in storm sewers down in there would put, take care of some of the drainage coming down. Is there anybody here that's got knowledge about storm sewers?
Greg, I guess both.
Well, I mean, that, there's nothing between us. There is nothing between the two, the top layer houses and our layer. Nothing between Council Street and Chamber Drive. There's nothing.
Typically, there isn't.
No, there's nothing between us. So how, where is we, where is it supposed to go? It's not gonna go uphill into the street. The water coming down, if we have, there's a fire hydrant up here. If we have a fire in one of those houses, where's the water gonna go? There's nothing between us. When I bought the house, or we bought the house, along with everybody else, who buys the house that says, gee, do we have stor- sewer drains here? And you don't do that. You assume that the city has provided a, a met, a way of having a storm sewer drainage for everybody. That's the whole object of building houses and especially in subdivisions. But if we let this go, and then there's a subdivision which is gonna connect Chamber Drive over to Caitlin, well, where's all those tile lines that are coming down the hill now gonna go? Where's all that water gonna go?
Well, and I agree a hundred and ten percent. I'm just trying to figure out, once we can figure out where the water's coming from. So are you saying if it's not a city problem, is it the developer problem?
I'm, I, I'm saying that if the developer and the city could work together and put some storm drains in between us, like it was a street, if there, there's no street between us, so you just got a hill of houses. But to have those tile lines coming down the hill, pouring into our backyards, I mean, we haven't finished the street yet. Council Street's only got, they've only built maybe, what, six houses, probably six more houses to be built. What happens when we get all a dozen houses up there with water and all the tile lines coming down? Where's the water gonna go if we don't have storm sewer? I mean, I would think the city would want to have storm sewers for the people that are building homes. Every, every home should have that entitlement to a storm sewer. If that's not fit area to be building in because we have a water issue, then maybe we shouldn't even be getting permits. I mean, how are people supposed to know? You buy a home and then, you should see, all of you on, on the council, and some of you have already been there, and see the house next door to us. It's terrible. There's, it's completely washed out underneath. They had the basement flooded. And it's gonna happen to all of us. I have gone by after, we had a heavy rain. It was only, this summer, we only had one heavy rain, thank goodness. And it, and now after that rain, I went out, that hot home on the Circle Drive down there, Dylan's Circle, the Court. There's a Circle Drive, that whole backyard of the, uh, I believe they're in Streets. They had, complete backyard was full of water. Their kids' playground, their equipment was all underwater. To say it's just a couple houses, everybody has had some problems and it's gonna get a lot worse. And all I'm doing here is trying to say, we, the people, we would like to see if the city could come in before the rest of the development, before the rest of the houses are built, and we can't get machinery down in there, then it will be a real, a real mess. But we can get down in there now and try and put maybe three or four storm sewers in there to take the drainage off. That's all I'm asking for. And I think in the future, there should be an ordinance in Anamosa that is gonna equip people, give people, make the builder have to come up with a plan as to what they're gonna do, not just have, have all these tile lines going down. If you, in the rural area, you go over to the ASCS office or someone, you talk about tile lines. You can't run a tile line to the next farmer's ground. You get a terrible hefty fine. Well, what's the matter with us? You're running tile lines to the neighbors. This doesn't make any sense. I don't know. I just wish the council would see it and do something about it. We need the problem fixed 'cause it's not gonna get any better.
Uh, just one note I'd like to bring up to the council that the house that she's talking about, we're very well aware, but that's the one I made in reference to. We had somebody call in that there was a possible water main break there. That was long before, years ago, before those houses were ever built up on Council Street. Thank you.
I'm Norman Duchonny, GIC, in four fifteen Chamber. And it appears to me the original plan was to have this, uh, swale going all the way behind all these houses and dumping out on, I think it's Council Street. But the problem is to get to Council Street, it's gotta go up about two feet. So, so all that water coming behind the houses stops at our houses, our three, our three people and two between, uh, it's just two places that goes out to the street. And it, instead of having all the other houses that taking care of their own water, it's all coming to ours.
Like you said, there's some groundwater, but there's also, like Mrs. Lyons said, all these tiles. Nobody's fault, but they're all up on these downspouts and they're bringing them down so far so nothing's even soaking in. If it would get, you know, soak in some, so it would slow it up. Now they're down there and it's just shooting right on the people's property on Chamber. It's just bringing it... I'm assuming the people are probably, they want their lawn to wash out or the sod. But then it's shooting that water all toward these people, speeding it up. You know, it's just not a good situation. Like the gentleman said, there should've been a swale, something that would work. And it's not a contractor or anybody's fault. It's just not designed correctly.
So how do we fix it?
You know, I don't, if it could be graded, if... You know, I don't, if it could be graded, if you could put storm drain, we've got a gentleman here that's a contractor, see what Doug wants to say.
Doug, request one zero four eight seven Shaw Road. Basically, the dirt swale out there probably was designed to carry all this. Now, it might not be have enough slope to carry the water, you know, in a timely manner to get it away. There is a very high water table out there in that area. You know, I think you can go to Andy Ward's house, who's up on Council Street, his sun pump runs all the time. Well, you can't tie your e-sbelt and drain tile in the city sewer, so then you have to go into the storm sewer. So, some of these, when they have a walkout basement that, when you come down, your e-sbelt is below the storm sewer. So, then you would have to pump the water up into a storm sewer. You know, on the back of a house, if it's too low, you can't have nat- natural flow into a storm sewer on the street. So, then the water just comes out the back of the house. Now, chances are, and I'm not that familiar with the water, groundwater grading up there. I know there's a waterway in between the two subdivisions. If there is, if the dirt's too high at the end of it, and the water can't come out, that's not good.
No, that's the way it is.
And the only way you're gonna solve, the only way you're gonna solve that is put a catch basin there in your low spot and go into the city sewer. But there again, that's on private property. So, then the city would have to look at that, because, you know, long the wa- water just has to get out of there. If there's a swale there, if it's not carrying the water fast enough, 'cause it's all sodded, the grass is gonna retain the water from natural flow. So, during a rain or something like that, your water's not gonna flow out there as fast, so it's gonna stay there. And if you're gonna have the water, if the ground is kinda saturated anyway, it's just gonna sit there. So, somehow, you have to look at regrading it and put a catch basin there, so the water gets out of, in behind the houses. That's probably how it was designed, you know, on Chamber Drive when the cotton lots were approved, that's why there's a swale in the back. Maybe it wasn't enough swale, I guess now we kinda know or whatever, but the engineers approved the subdivisions at that point.
We don't know what, uh, builder along the way filled in the backyard or, or what happened.
Well, it could've happened, you know, the swale could've been graded out.
After they dug the basement.
The swale has no outlet.
Yeah, but like Cody just said, you know, when the builder built the houses, the swale could've been deeper. But if you wanna go to it, when you build a house, instead of hauling the dirt out, sometimes it's cheap or, no, it's cheaper to push it in the backyard. So, then your, your swale that might've been deeper at construction, or when the plot was approved, got filled in. I could easily see that happening too. But there again, it's, it's kinda, it's private property and water runs downhill. So, anything up, uphill is definitely gonna be coming, coming down.
So, what would a catch basin impale? You said you could maybe add a catch basin?
Well, a catch basin is just a, you know, there again, an engineer would have to size it probably thirty inch, thirty-six inch round, with an open grate on top of it, so water can go down yet, then you'd have to take it over to the city storm sewer.
Like a beehive?
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Swale it so it would be there better.
You might have to grade the waterway different, but I don't know if the city wants to get into regrading the waterway different.
On private property.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was just, uh, the catch basin, would that be part of the city? But then, that would be.
Unfortunately, no.
It probably wouldn't be unless you go into the city right away at the street, which would be way at the end of it.
And I wouldn't wanna get started doing that, 'cause we would be putting catch basins up everywhere.
You bet.
Well, and I get that, I'm just, I'm just weighing all the pros and cons, I'm just, you know.
Basically, you got a high water table out there, and the, the swale is probably too flat to carry water away. I mean, it's, I know, I, I do those houses over there in Chamber Drive, and most, everything on the south side of that drive, little sun pumps. We dug a basement one time, went to, the next day, it had twelve inches of water in the bottom of that basement. That's how much groundwater is in that area.
Without any rain.
Without any rain, it just seeps in overnight.
Yeah.
Why was that out?
Oh, that's on, you know, Chamber Drive.
Yeah, with Port.
Or Cut the Club Drive.
Yeah.
Cut the Club Drive, which is south of you yet.
Do they have water down there too?
Yeah, they got a.
It's an extremely high water table in the area.
Caitlin, I have the same way.
Yeah, there's, up on Caitlin, you had the same thing.
Fawn Creek Golf Course.
It, it, it's just a problem, but.
Stays wet, it's, yeah.
There's just a high water table out there, and I, I appreciate you guys' problem, but erosion control isn't the problem out there. It's just basically trying to get the water away from the houses.
It's some grading issues.
Grading issues, yeah.
Like you said, they probably was filled in at one, was there, maybe, then filled in, and like you said, they just leveled it and took that away.
Well, there were a lot of other swales out there when it was first done.
Well, it probably was, but, you know, when a contractor builds a house and that dirt piles in the backyard, are you gonna pay a hundred dollars an hour to a dump truck to haul it away, or are you just gonna push it out?
No, I don't. I remember the swales when they first got done with that, when that was first done.
Yeah, I didn't pay that much attention to the actual swales, but I could see how it would change.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Linda, the, your backyard at the back of your property line, uh, where that bumps into the undeveloped, which.
Right.
North of you, east?
East.
East. That's the concern area, where the water's coming down the hill, it's, it just sits there and disperses at its own free will.
We're not the only ones.
Yeah.
'Cause if you walk the sidewalk and you walk that whole area down to the court, you'll see the black sidewalks where the water, uh, I don't remember the name of the people, but there's about three or four houses, even the one down at the bottom.
I've seen.
We're not the only one, yeah. We're not the only ones.
When that water is under pressure through hard rain.
Snow.
Run off, yes. Then it forces itself out of that depression area and towards your house.
Right. Uh, the driveways have been, I guess, a coat of ice in the winter, because the waters, the snow, there's nowhere for it to go. We just need some type of a drainage. I, what is a swale? Would you please explain that, what?
Ditch.
Just a hill. And can't we put, is there no way that we could put some storm sewers in there?
You probably don't need it.
A couple of them or something?
You probably don't need anything, you probably just need to regrade the backyards to accommodate the flow of water.
Although, you, you're gonna want the immediate area by your house, your foundation, you want that to be higher than the swale. Or this depression, I should say. Otherwise, all that water is making its way right up to your house.
We are higher now in the back.
Yeah, and, and that's the way it should be.
But we can't go any higher, 'cause we, you know.
You definitely don't wanna lower.
No, but, you know, we are gonna, if we can't get anything by the city, we are going to hire somebody and go in and, but are we gonna be under some kind of a scrutiny with the neighbors? I mean, are there laws or anything of putting in there something that we want to? He's shaking his head no, so I guess we can do what we want. So, we can put up a wall, we can put up whatever we want.
You say on private property, you, you can't restrict the flow of the water naturally. You can't dam water up, there's a law against that, but water has to flow downhill.
So, we can do what we.
Well.
You can control where it flows.
The sticky, the sticky part of this whole issue is your private property bumping other private property. Now, maybe, may not be a homeowner yet, it's still, but, uh, property of the.
Developer.
Yeah, developer, thanks. So, the, the city is gonna be very limited on what we can do. And I'm not saying we don't work together, but we can't dictate, this is what you will do either.
Doug, can you tell me, is there an easement between us? Between Council Street and, 'cause I was told there was. I was told there was an easement in our backyards.
Yeah, I couldn't really tell you that.
It goes down through there, and if there is, the city would be able to go in there and do something.
I know there's not an easement either.
Wasn't an easement on the plats when I looked at them?
On the plat would've shown a drainage easement if there would've been.
There was no drainage.
Detailed how to be an easement.
Not on either one, seven or eight, middle range?
There's no easement that shows?
That I showed, that I showed on the plat, no.
Well, what is the solution? What do we have to do?
You, you're probably gonna have to hire somebody to look at that as the three of you, or the five of you, or however many.
Everybody.
It's gonna be where it's gonna end up, to get to a street somewhere, that's the thing, you can't go two houses, like, you know, you said, and stop.
You're gonna have to work together to have somebody come in there and do it as a combined project.
I just wanna state, Linda, that you, you, you initially brought this to council in August.
Right.
Council, current council was here in August. I don't believe any of us six have been dismissive to your concerns. It's just not something we can react quickly. Now, August to October, some people may say, wow, that's certainly dragging your feet. I've listened to you, every word you've said when you came here, I've stopped at your residence and talked to you. Other council members have been by and looked at the project, so I don't think we've been dismissive.
Oh, no, no.
We haven't given you just what you're looking for, but we certainly haven't been dismissive.
Well, I guess what I was trying to get through to is, before any more development takes place and more tile lines, is there something that we can do now, before this happens? Because once the houses are built, it's just gonna add to everybody's problem there. It's gonna devalue the, you know.
U.S. homeowners could get together and regrade your backyards, but us as a city, since we don't have an easement, we can't just go in there and start tearing up your backyard.
Well, what are we gonna link into if we don't have the city's approval?
I mean, it sounds like, from what I've seen, when I've looked at it, is it could just, it just needs to run out towards the street, or towards the, the retention pond, or just not pool in your backyards.
If I'm not mistaken, they can get approval to hook onto the storm sewer system, can't they?
That's what I was wondering.
Are you talking about?
If, if the homeowners got together and put in a beehive or regraded it.
That.
Probably the best way, is my suggestion, is you got several lots there that aren't developed yet. One thing is, you could go talk to the developer, and then I believe there's like three houses there right now, where if you talk to the developer, the possibly puts them on the other side of the soil, and, and then run it down, and then across them people's property, there is a storm rain that comes down over there on, uh, whatever it drives.
On the street?
Yeah.
But I think what she's saying is, if they did that, then the new developer comes, put a new house there, they're gonna regrade all that and change it.
Yeah.
I think that's what she's delusional, how, how not to have it happen.
There's nothing to protect us.
But we can't control that either. I mean, you can't dictate to a developer how they do their.
I couldn't agree more, we can't. But tell me why we can't facilitate this project?
I am not willing to spend money on a.
I didn't say we spend money, I'm saying, why can't we facilitate this?
So, when.
Why can't we call the parties to the table, be neighborly, and try to work for the common good? Why can that not happen?
They have that, or.
Or have, could it be, can you put contingencies on building permits when somebody comes in and wants to build there? Can it be, the grading has to be such, can they do that?
I mean, this is just a problem that happens. I mean, I live next door to Rich's parents, and they lived up the hill from me, water came down the hill. I had to put tile around my house to keep my basement dry. I didn't, I didn't show up here and say, well, I need, I, I need the city to do this for me. I just, I took care of it because that's what had to be done.
I'm not asking for some, I mean, we've already, we've just been in there for about four or five months, and we've already put two thousand dollars into the front yard, putting in French drains, to help, we, we weren't trying to get out of anything. But when we had somebody, we have a plan for the backyard, so we are willing to do that. But my thing concerned was, when we go and do something in our backyard, I'm gonna affect other people. And I've had several people tell me, they just don't have the money. A lot of the people are retired people, some of them are new with little kids. Not everybody has money to just go and do it. And my thinking was, if we come here to the council, perhaps we could get something on file or in place where the developer for the houses behind us that are gonna, can work with us. They have the equipment, maybe they could help eradicate this problem for everybody. The house next door to us has been for sale for over a year, and they're having a hard time selling it. And I think, we're even on Caitlin, we bought a house on Caitlin, and soon as I found out about the water problem there, we got out of it. You know, word's gonna travel, that whole area, he's right, there's a water problem.
There is.
And if we didn't own it ahead, I'd have never bought a house there. I'd have never went that route, 'cause look what we're looking at. And word's gonna travel, because everybody's talking now, well, what's the problem out there? Well, there's water problems. Be at the top of the hill, but look out, because there's the hill on top of that hill. And when they build down there, whoever's gonna be building along Fawn Creek to connect Caitlin to, to, uh, Chamber Drive, Lord, help those people, because they're gonna get a lot of water, it's gonna go downhill. And I'm not trying to get out of doing something, I agree with you, we've already, and we're, we have a plan with Jeff Minger. But he said, we'll see what you can get the council to do, because this may not even work, what we're gonna do. You could put all the, the hills you want in your backyard, but your bottom windows are only so high up, and you can only put so much. I don't know, it's kinda like, uh, should've, could've, would've.
Is there a time this week you wanna meet out there and talk? I'll come out, look.
Yeah, come on, I, I'll meet with anybody and look at the problem, because.
Somebody from the city wants to be there too, I don't care, but I can look at the problem, give you my personal opinion.
That would be very nice of you, I appreciate it. But I, like I said, I don't wanna dump it on my neighbors either, I wanna make sure. That we're doing something that's neighborly. 'Cause like I said, this plan was in place from the people who bought the house from, well, I thought to myself, well, that's okay, we'll go ahead with it, and then I said, well, look at the house next door. I mean, what's happening in the neighborhood?
Well, maybe Greg and I can come out and, if we set up time, just come out and have a general talk.
That's a good idea.
See what we can hit.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And if you guys would come back then, after you do that, and let us know what, what you see and what you've decided, that would be good.
Thanks, Chuck.
Greg, can you reach out to me? I could possibly free up that, of the time allotment that you're gonna meet, I would love to. This is the facilitation I was talking about.
Norman Duchonik again, four fifteen Chamber Drive. Uh, we did regrade two of the yards, mine and Elmore's yard, and, uh, I didn't know about it at the time. Uh, but if I'd have bought it new, I could've sued the builder, because they did not grade it properly. There's a code, I don't know if many of you know that, but there is a code for Anamosa, and you have to have a certain slope away from the foundation. And, uh, in the case of Elmore's, the, the slope was the opposite towards the foundation. I think that people are not even paying any attention to slopes, that's what it appears to be. They just do whatever they want to, whatever comes out, have a problem, because they didn't pay any attention, they don't care.
Yeah, I didn't even know there was an ordinance that told you a minimum slope away from the.
Sure is, yeah. I didn't, I didn't know until after why I graded it. I looked it up on internet.
It's just kinda common sense, you gotta have the water going away from your basement.
Well, somebody didn't come for any of that, it's in the yard.
So, seven point six, we just wanna table that.
Make some more information.
No reaction with this.
No answer.
We're gonna do anything about the question, and we're gonna do anything about this, you know, this all came about, the soil erosion thing, and then it was kind of imploded to where we're gonna put in a bunch of, uh, things for when the building permits you issue, are issued and, and erosion control, but there is no erosion control, so are we gonna get away from that part of it?
For tonight?
Because this is a groundwater problem now, instead of an erosion control problem?
For tonight, Joe.
Our, our erosion control ordinance, I would say is not real streamlined though either. We could, my opinion is, it could be, it could be made better, it could be improved on. In reading Marion's, in reading Marion's, uh, ordinance, I definitely don't wanna go that deep into this. I've talked to contractors from, not on the local level. I've talked to other communities, obviously not Anamosa, and there is some common ground that they don't have in ordinances, but it's expected as a.
Building permit.
De- developer digging the hole. So I believe we could get improved upon.
Alright, so that one's tabled till later, so. Moving on, eight point O Public Works, eight point one, discussion, possible action on equipment sharing, use policy and associated fee schedule.
The, um, equipment sharing schedule and fees I have in front of me is one that was adopted in two thousand and ten. And you guys wanted to talk about this, maybe to update fees or makes a policy on when and this is gonna be done and under what circumstances and to who you'd be providing the service?
Do, like, people comment? Use city equipment, like, are we renting out air compressors for forty-five dollars an hour? Like, what, how did this all come about?
This is city equipment with other cities.
It's governmental.
Yes.
Like if.
If Monticello needed something, or the county.
Darsville.
Which maybe we need to add that, county, city and county, but.
Other municipalities?
Yes. We probably should get rid of the grit disposal and septic tank, because we're unable, is that correct?
The only place we take grit from is reformatory, nothing else.
Is that part of their permit with the DNR or?
Correct.
So.
We take care of all that.
And then we bill them forty-five dollars alone?
Well.
Tammy could probably answer you better on that one than I could.
I haven't bailed the penitentiary on the grit disposal.
You don't bailed the penitentiary for grit disposal at forty-five dollars alone?
So we maybe need to do that. Septic tanks, we're unable to take, just because of our, our plant.
We can't take septic for any other community because it could potentially upset our plant or overload our plant, so we don't do it.
I don't think we can do grit disposal anymore, because we have to take it to Lynn County, don't we, Dan?
We take reformatories grit now, and I can split it at Lynn County.
Right.
That's the only place we take.
So it's not a method you probably wanna start from.
Where, where did these amounts come from?
They were the comparable fees, I guess, for that, what was, in two thousand and ten?
I think they came from Marion. I think that sounds right.
Yeah, and they looked around and came up with those prices to be competitive.
I guess my question is, why are we taking grit disposal from the reformatory and not charging them for it? Why is that the city expect?
That is all part of a pre-treatment agreement long before my, I'm ready.
Is that part of the treatment agreement that needs to be updated?
Agreement is up in December. I've asked Pat Callahan about it.
December of this year, Dan?
Yes. Some guidance, we have a temporary with the penitentiary now. And it has to be done before December, so I talked to Pat about it the other day. Maybe get some insight from Pat on how to do a proper pre-treatment agreement, because ours is two thousand and seven, I believe, is only recognized.
At that point, can you address the grit disposal in that? Be sure just that we're getting paid for it.
I can take care of that.
I'd like you to go through Tammy when you have those discussions, instead of going straight to Pat.
I plan on Tammy being right there with us, Bill.
Soon as I look at this listing, uh, Dan, Jim, and Greg, do you guys feel these adequate rates for twenty seventeen?
Yeah, they're fair prices. That, uh, most of them, like you said, come from the city of Marion, who I work with up there, the public works director, and that's where most of them came from. And, um, that's what they charge pretty much, and, uh, it seems a fair price, yeah. I know I've loaned, uh, the Chipper red to, uh, the city of Monticello a couple times. And, uh, they were very happy that we were able to do that, you know, as a, as another municipality. And they were absolutely buying up the rates.
So, city of Marion hasn't raised the rates in seven years?
Nope. Still the same. I think we should raise the jetter rates some, in my, in my own opinion. That's a pretty expensive piece of equipment.
How much do you think it should go up?
It, it cost me about three hundred and fifty bucks an hour for a jetter and one man.
I'd say two hundred bucks an hour, myself and a man, just to be fair.
And obviously, this is just city to city.
Right, I was saying, municipality or county.
Yeah, you, you got it.
So that would be the only line item on here that would need to be increased, I'm hearing?
Let, let me just say this, every, anything that has with one man, should that be looked at? Because as time goes on, everybody's hours go up, everybody's wage goes up. So, anything that says with one man, should have that looked at, I believe.
And maybe it should be stated as operator.
That way, we're making sure that our equipment's not being abused.
It sounds better than with one man. It's more professional. I think a dump truck with one man at eighty-five dollars an hour is kind of low. I mean, what's the average wage of an employee?
I don't dis, I'm not disagreeing with you, Betty. So I just refresh your memory. I just asked Dan, Greg, and Jim, who are the keeper of the keys on these line items. And other than Dan thinking the jetter was a little light, everything else appears to be good.
Okay, but, oh, and so you gotta remember with this list, guys, that we're trying to help out other municipalities.
That's where I think.
What happens if Monticello has a piece of equipment that I don't have that I need to borrow? Or we go and say, hey, we can't bring you the Chipper anymore for forty-five an hour, we're gonna jack it up to seventy-five. When we go to borrow a piece of their equipment, we're gonna do that. We're trying to help each other out here.
Well, I get that. I get that, but.
And I understand the jetter needs to be more.
No, with, with, no, like Chipper, no. The jetter is typically a two-man truck. What we did last week is Cory took the, Coleman, one of the guys helped him. They were there four hours, and essentially six hundred bucks, and Eric told me, thank you so much for doing that. If you guys ever need help with anything, call us. There are thirty things on there that are mine that I will not loan out.
I agree, Rich, you know, take a look at it, right, you know, the route, the path you were going, I, I, I think you were, you're spot on there. It's just that you factor in that, uh, reciprocating, uh, and it is for a, a neighbor, neighbor community.
Well, let me ask you this, how many times have we had to borrow anything from anybody, or do anything from anybody?
I haven't had to yet. I have. I borrowed a sampler. Uh, Monticello's borrowed our root cutter before, when they had a problem. We just kinda trade back and forth and help each other out.
Okay, when you talk about the root cutter, who's running that?
I let them use it, because I trust that operator up there, but typically, I just wouldn't dream about using the root cutter.
Because that, that's a little specialized.
It's specialized cutting equipment for sewer, yeah.
So, if it's something that's kinda specialized, I, I mean, anybody can skid loader, you know, whatever, but.
Take a, take a plow truck, for instance, if, if something would happen to one of my major, one of my plow trucks, you can't just walk down to Freightliner or anywhere else like that to get a plow truck. You know, I'm gonna have to look at the possibility of, of borrowing from somewhere. Where am I gonna go? I'd have to go to another municipality, you know, that's where that exchange thing comes in.
Well, I, I get the exchange. I mean, I think it's great to help out other communities, and I'm all for it. But, you know, if we're gonna be sending somebody who's specialized, like with the jetter or the root cutter or something of that nature, you know, that's taking somebody out who's specialized. You know, if we're somebody who's gonna run a jackhammer, you know, I wouldn't like it, but I could probably do it. Might not be able to hear for several days, but, you know.
I don't plan to run one.
I don't either, but. But, you know, it's just something that, for after seven years, I think it needs to be looked at just from the standpoint of the equipment and what we're doing with it.
Well, and the ones that say with one man, like the dump truck with one man, would there be two separate prices when somebody used their dump truck versus having somebody having to go out?
Actually use it?
Yeah.
Well, the first thing you'd probably wanna do is have your department heads look over this equipment list. What they would feel comfortable loaning out and not. Greg said there's a couple things that he wouldn't. And then also let them tell you whether, where you need two separate prices. You know, the dump would drag, would Greg let a dump truck go out without a driver going with it?
There's nothing to say that we just don't have. Just because we have the list doesn't mean we're going to loan it out.
That's right.
Correct. But if you want, the department has to go through it, compare prices.
We have an old truck, maybe, but not, we don't have any extras right now, we can't afford it.
That was gonna be my recommendation, that Dan, Greg, and Jim, take a look at this listing and see what changes, if any, they would recommend to the council.
And I think maybe when we put this together was maybe if there was a disaster in another community and they needed things like that.
I think that was the reasoning behind it originally.
She had a heavy heart at the time.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll have, uh, Dan, Jim, and Greg go through these and come back with what they would and wouldn't.
You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Alright. So that one will be no ask. Eight point two, discussion and possible action on the utilization of inmate labor for wastewater department and all departments per the twenty A.D. agreement.
This is on agenda from the last council meeting and discussion with Dan regarding his department using inmate labor. So, he kind of out a list of duties, I believe.
Those are just some of the thought, the stuff I thought of today. I just sat down, dropped some stuff down, I had a real headache today, so. I might have missed a few things.
I guess if there, if there are people that they can let go from the prison, and they have inmates that are able to do that, I don't see any issues with not getting after this list and getting things cleaned up.
And you're already certified, went through the classes.
Correct.
So, you're done that way.
Correct. I've taken even a further step than that. Um, I'm talking to the reformatory about doing some kind of a training program for inmates. So when they do get released in the future, they have a skill or a trade that they can go out and get a job with, so I'm already, I'd like to be one of the first wastewater plants in Iowa to do that with an inmate.
So they do that now with an electrical program, is that correct? Or, or were you aware of this?
No, I did not know that.
They do an apprenticeship through the elect, uh, like an electrical program, and I think it's through the union, yeah. With the union.
It's gonna take the right inmate and with the right, right job skills and, and mindset to do this. Um, I'm pretty passionate about wastewater, I think it'd benefit to Anamosa and the inmates themselves.
So, and I wasn't sure what all you had in mind, um, because I know one of the things which can't give your, the inmates keys, so, you know, none of these things require anything like that?
If we did have to go, say, grab a sample or something, where they only wanted to keep, set of keys to the prison, which all three of us have one, so.
So the prison, it's a job.
The, the bar screen. We could just sample at the prison.
Eighteen items, that's rather lengthy.
Not really, I could think of a lot more.
Well, I, I heard you say that it was only gonna be a partial list.
Uh, root cutting alone, just to give you an idea, Rod, we've done, oh, probably twelve blocks of sewer camera in the last week. Out of them, twelve blocks, ninety-five percent of them need root cut, and what, what you do is actually, we, you televise it, you set your reel on the jetter, you go up to say seventy feet, and you sit there and you run that root cutter, and it, it's, it's, takes quite a while, but the problem with that is, I have to re-camera that line to see if I got the roots cut out, because I can't see underground. So it's very, it takes a lot of time.
Okay, so my understanding on the, the agreement we have with prison industries for, uh, labor, you, it would be you, Greg, or Jim, have to submit, uh, what you're gonna be requesting them to do over a, a period of time?
I, I was there Wednesday and talked to the safety guy, uh, Brian Tracy. He said, Danny, you could use them every day. I have no problem with that. We want them out, be productive. Doesn't matter what they're doing. Uh, we would like them to be supervised, of course.
Well, they have to be, they have to be within your vision, your view?
That's the way I interpret it.
Yeah, it's.
And I would not feel comfortable just not keeping an eye on one of the guys.
There's a lot of stuff on this list that it's two guys doing it anyway.
I'll tell you, when I took that plan over, and you're gonna laugh at me probably, but the old wastewater plant you were over there was a, a dump, okay? So when I got that new plan, or I was put in charge of that new plant, I told myself, the day I walk off this plant, it's gonna be just as nice as the day I took it over. So that means scrubbing stuff, cleaning stuff, maintaining stuff, just like four hundred diffusers. You pull four hundred diffusers out of a wastewater plant, clean them, yeah, it's a terrible job, but somebody's gotta do it, just to keep running it.
Yeah.
We have to do that.
Supposed to do it every year. I've done it for two years.
That's a yearly thing.
But it's, you can do a tank at a time, as you see fit, and traffic.
Greg, did you wanna give them a, kind of an update on your process and how you've used the inmates, any expectations?
In the street department, uh, we had a vacancy, so I've been utilizing one pretty much every day. Uh, other than that, uh, we've used them a little bit at pump contest, we help, uh, they help down with the, uh, fall cleanup, the spring cleanup. And then most of the time, uh, we utilize them for, uh, using it in some of the cemetery.
One thing I do wanna bring your attention to, though, is we have been shorthanded at the wastewater plant with the prior employee, now Jim Shorty Guy. So we went over, well over a year, and I have two people that are gone every other Friday.